Would you please stand to pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk?
At 10:15, John Roca C., the Budget Director, will inform the public and update the Board on the department. At 10:30, Yvonne Newton, the Purchasing Director, will inform the public and update the Board on their department. At 11:00 AM, the Public Hearing on the Jail Tax Allocation. Under Resolutions, Job and Family Services Bills?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Basie?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Investments?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Basie?
Aye.
Appropriations?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Basie?
Aye.
Transfers?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Basie?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
There was one advance?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Basie?
Aye.
Requisitions?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Basie?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Trial expenses?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Basie?
Aye.
Bills?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Basie?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Authorized various personnel actions as indicated on the summary for employees within the jurisdiction of Lorraine County Board of Commissioners?
There was one?
Correct.
Aye.
Commissioner's, uh...
I'd make a motion first.
Pardon me?
You gotta make a motion first.
She did. She... The summary sheet.
Okay.
What are you trying to say?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I was...
What, what, what face are you on? First, second, or third?
Home run.
Whoa, right!
He's a interference fan.
Okay, alright, yeah.
Kinda sorry I mentioned that.
You know, it's bosses...
Little cubby joke there.
It's bosses today.
I hope they have a clown.
I was gonna say, well, nice things about the bosses today, but, okay, there we go. I'd like to request an executive session to discuss potential new hires after the conclusion of our business today.
Okay, so then, we're not, we're gonna hold the Personnel Summary Sheet?
Well, do we need to hold this, Jim? Is, are you going to, you think you might include something else?
I don't, I don't know if there's gonna be anything that needs to be included on the list this week, so I think you can go ahead and vote on the sheet if you like. I still need to have the executive session for the personnel issues.
We can wait till afterwards.
Okay, you wanna hold it?
We'll have the pleasure of the Board.
And I withdraw my motion.
Under the Commissioners, number 10, appoint Brian Bonham as a member to Lorraine County Fair Housing Board, effective October 16, 2003, expiring February 21, 2004, filling the unexpired term of Lee Holtzreger, who resigned.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Basie?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Under Community Development Department, award two contracts to Burge Building Company, Inc., Lorraine, Ohio, for emergency home repair assistance to be paid from 2002 CDBG Formula Activities Account, 12602-2501-450422. One, $5,445, will be paid to Burge for assistance to Terry and Jennifer Wees at 1633 School Street, Sheffield Township, for a foundation and a water heater. $3,265.56 will be paid to Burge for assistance to Louis Johnson at 386 South Pleasant Street, Oberlin, for a roof repair.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Basie?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Under Job and Family Services, approve an enter into amendment number one of the contract between Lorraine County Department of Job and Family Services and Child Care Resource Center for Child Development Associate Training using childcare quality funds. Said amendment is to reflect an increase in the contract value by $6,380, with the total contract amount not to exceed $19,730 to allow for the purchase of two additional training programs for in-home childcare providers and childcare center staff.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Basie?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Disenlight. You're welcome.
Under the Workforce Development Agency, 13, approve an enter into a lease agreement between Lorraine County Board of Commissioners and Workforce Development Agency at 42495 North Ridge Road, Alery Township. Workforce Development Agency will utilize 3,113 square feet of finished office space, effective retroactive to July 1, 2003, through June 30, 2004. The total contract amount is $17,619.58, or monthly installments of $1,468.3, based upon the cost report compiled by Maximus, Inc.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Basie?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Approve an enter into a lease agreement between Lorraine County Board of Commissioners and Workforce Institute in Lorraine County at 42495 North Ridge Road, Alery Township. Workforce Institute will utilize 6,843 square feet of finished office space, including furniture, equipment, and computers, effective retroactive to July 1, 2003, through June 30, 2004. The total contract amount is $38,731.38, or monthly installments of $3,227.62, based upon the cost report compiled by Maximus, Inc.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Basie?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Under Domestic Relations, cancel the agreement between Lorraine County Board of Commissioners and Justice Benefits, Inc., a business unit of Unife Care Limited, Dallas, Texas, to provide professional services for Lorraine County Domestic Relations Court. Significant changes to the 4E contract for the current federal fiscal year between the state of Ohio and the federal government provides for the state to perform additional services that were previously provided by JBI, and the court will assume responsibility for filing of federal reimbursements of 4E claims. To date, JBI has not filed any claims on behalf of the court, and no outstanding fees are due to JBI. So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
I'm sorry, Mr. Moore?
That's good. You're paying attention.
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Basie?
Aye.
Oh, you forget a lot, you know. I love...
Mr. Cordez?
In addition to personnel issues, I also like to discuss ongoing labor negotiation in a packet that I sent to the Board with respect to that. Just want that adding into the reason for the executive session. Thanks. That would conclude me this morning.
Mr. Ennis, Assistant County Prosecutor?
I don't have anything this morning.
Commissioners' report?
Commissioner Blair?
Thank you, Angela. Tuesday evening, I was invited to attend a common ground, a builder's recognition that they had, a bridge builder recognition, and I thought that this was really neat. This was the, uh, memento that they gave. It's for their bridge that they were able to install over the, across the Bemidji River. Common Ground, as you know, is the former Oberlin Day Camp, and they've received funding from Cindy Nord, plus a lot of other people. The list was quite long, and they're very excited about the bridge, so it was really nice to go there. And it was raining when we went, and when we came out, the rain had all gone away, cleared up. It was really nice, so I think that was a message. And anyway, I hope that we can build some more bridges tomorrow in Lorraine County when we have our fourth annual community summit. Thank you very much.
Nice segue.
How you like that, huh?
Ms. Moore?
Yeah, we have a dignitary in the office I'd like to introduce today. She is a county commissioner in Nye County, that's N-Y-E, in Nevada. She happens to be attending a nuclear energy conference in Dayton. And Nye County happens to be the third largest county in the country. It's 18,000 square miles. A little point on that, though, only 2% of it's owned by the citizens, the other 98% are owned by the federal government. And if anybody knows anything about the, I think it's called the Yucca Mountain, where all the nuclear waste is, that's why she came back to the meeting. She came in and I, she's on some very important commissions that I think are important, the Brothel Liquor and Gaming Board Commission, something that's near and dear to everyone's heart. The neat thing is, Joni Eastley is here, and she was born and raised here in Lorraine County, and she moved away in 84, and she happens to be a county commissioner in Nevada, and I just wanna say thank you for coming to our meeting, if you don't mind standing and saying hi, and, so, welcome for coming.
I think you ought to probably introduce her family as too, David.
Her family is here.
Yeah, well, I think you ought to... Well, I think you ought to introduce her family who's here too, 'cause I think that's probably how she got here today.
I think she drove herself. Did you drive yourself?
That's not what I'm trying to do, got here to the meeting.
So...
Are you going to, or do I have to publicly ask?
No, I'll, no, you can, she's here with her son.
Thank you. I just, welcome.
Well, but thank you for coming in and listening to our meetings, since ours are so long today. I know, ours is only, this is one of those rare moments where it's only 15 minutes, so...
So far.
Just begun, just begun.
That's true, we got a lot more to go, but...
Do you have anything else?
Oh, that was all.
Okay. And I just have one thing. The other day, a lady came in my office, her car was towed away from the parking lot, costing $96. This lady is a volunteer for the Child Advocate Program, and when I checked in, Jim was telling me we had two parking spaces in the parking deck, four volunteers for the Child Advocate Program, and when I called Tim Green, he said there was only one, and the other was given to another volunteer program. But, you know, it's really heartbreaking when volunteers have to pay $96 after they give their time, $96 to get their car back. That's unbelievable to me, when each and every one of us as employees here get free parking in that parking deck, and volunteers that don't get any pay whatsoever get towed away. I think that we should really review the situation with the towing over here and put a halt to it. I look out my window and I look at that parking lot, and parents are using the parking lot to pick up their kids from school. But we, you know, that, which is really good, I'm glad it's there for them to use it, but that tells me that there's space available there for the public, that we don't have to tow these cars. And I would like for us to do something about it, either stop the towing, or put longer hours on there, or give the volunteers some special parking out there. Now, they're just in the Child Advocate Program, Tim was up here the other day and told us a little bit about the program, but he also told us that there's over 100 volunteers just in that program. And two parking spaces, which Child Advocate only has one, but two is not even sufficient for them. And they can come in any time of the day or the night, they can go into the courts, and if they go in court, two hours is not enough.
There are four-hour parking spots as well.
But they could be here all day advocating for a child.
How many parking spaces do you have assigned out in our parking garage, Jim?
For the volunteers?
No, the total.
110%.
Yeah, I know, but how many, what's that number? How many, how many parking spaces we got there?
About 430.
Okay, that's why I have to know it's a lot.
Where?
In the parking deck.
In the parking deck.
That's, that's a rough estimate, plus or minus a couple of spaces.
And how many are there across the street, Jim?
About 65, 70?
You know, I also had a bricklayer call me that's working on the Justice Center, and he said he gets up there on the scaffold, and they were complaining because they have to carry their tools, like a block or so, every morning and every evening. And he said, when he looks at the parking area over here, there's always so much space, empty space, and at that time, he was asking for space for the construction workers, which they're almost, the bricklayers are almost done now, but that, that's just, that's beside the point, but I am concerned about the volunteers. I sincerely believe that we should either open up more space or eliminate that towing, period.
I have a problem with the free parking.
Free parking?
Yeah, we should be charging everybody here 20 bucks, that's a buck a day, five days a week.
Where? In the parking deck?
Yeah, that'd generate 103,000 a year, at a cost of 26,000, that would mean $72,000 a year for capital improvements, and...
So you would, you're...
I'm just saying it should have, I mean, when you said free parking for us, I've always been an advocate that we shouldn't be parking for free.
Well, I would agree. Apparently, your predecessor wasn't, because that's where we got the free parking from.
And that's why he is gone.
Oh! I don't know about that. I'm not sure that's the main reason.
Let's have a debate on that.
I'm sure there's 400 employees that just loved him.
Yeah, I know, 234 that didn't. At least, that's what I won by, I think, that's what I'm saying.
I'm not bringing it up for anyone to pay parking.
You made the statement that we're parking for free, I wanna make sure that I'm not taking, I'm not supporting that at all, so...
Well, whether you support it or not, we are, and volunteers are getting towed. That, that's my point.
I didn't think people were towing anymore. What happened there?
I thought it was eliminated too, until she came in my office and showed me the $96 bill.
We've been, we've been towing ongoing since we posted the lot. We're not as aggressively towing as we initially was, because some of the problems we have in would decrease, but there's random inspections and towing going on a lot on an ongoing basis. I, I don't mean to be contrary with the Board, but I told you a year ago that I felt it was necessary, I still feel it's necessary, but the decision lies with this Board. As soon as that, people realize that we're not towing out of that lot, it'll fill up. It had occurred earlier in the summer, when we decreased the towing, our own employees filled the lot up. When the weather was nice, they all wanted to park over there, and there was no parking for the public. It's like a catch-22, you either have the public out here yelling that they have no place to park, or you have an occasional person yelling that they got towed. It's a no-win situation, so I don't envy the Board or myself for being in this situation.
Well, if we're gonna keep the towing, that I would, then I would suggest that we open up some more areas for volunteers.
Can you look into that, Jim, to see what the issue, and take a look at that ticket?
We'll have to, we'll have to...
See what we can do with it.
We'll have to procure some additional, some additional parking.
Could you at least research it a little bit?
Sure, absolutely.
I think that's what Commissioner Bassi was looking for.
Put some signs up there that we have parking for volunteers that they don't have to pay, and they don't have to get their vehicles towed.
We only have parking for two sets of volunteers, Commissioner, right now.
Two, two parking spaces in the deck.
Well, we're gonna add, we're gonna add back the Voices for Children.
But we have victim witnesses too, that have...
That's correct.
...volunteers that come into this building. And I'm sure there are other programs other than those two, so two spaces just is not enough.
My comment is that parking will continue to be a problem in downtown Alery, I've said that for the last 10 years. And I was at a function a week ago Friday, and Father Wyben from St. Mary's Church approached me about what he perceived were construction workers parking in their parking lot at St. Mary's. And over the years, Father has been very gracious during the summer months in allowing us parking there. And so I prepared a notice, and it was taken over by the maintenance people that just said, "If you're a county employee or a Justice Center worker, please do not park here anymore." I said, "If you're an unauthorized user there," because they have their own building projects. So while I respect what you said, I think it's a bigger issue than that. I've also had some complaints about some people's perceived lack of disability parking in downtown Alery. So I think this is going to be an ongoing issue. I don't think it'll be resolved overnight. Those are my comments.
Well, this has been going on for a long time, and, and my point is, when I look out the window, there is space available out there. Okay, anyway, I had to bring that up because it really bothered me, and that, I believe, is all I have.
Old business?
I'm not one.
New business?
None.
None.
October 23, 2003, at 7:30 PM, the Commissioners will meet at Lorraine County Community College, 1005 North Abbey Road, Alery, Ohio, the Spitzer Conference Center, therefore, no meeting will be held that morning. Under Board Correspondence, and there is a notice to number five, I gotta note that that's been canceled, so...
Cancelled?
Yes.
The Workforce Investment Board Meeting?
And it has not been rescheduled.
I'll move the reading be waived with the noted correction.
Second.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Basie?
Aye. Jim, please, um, will you bring that back up next week, let us know what your finding is in this parking area?
I'll bring it back up...
A week should be sufficient.
Yeah, I'll bring it back up next week. I was gonna seek clarification after the meeting, 'cause we're not quite candid, I'm not exactly sure what I'm supposed to be doing with this. I'll, I'll, I'll get more spaces for the volunteers, as you and I spoke, but I'm gonna have to look through Alery and try to find additional parking resources, and that may take a little bit more time than that, 'cause we're, we're out of spaces, we've been out of spaces.
Well, just, the only thing I'm asking is more space across the street, put some signs up for volunteers. I don't know how my colleagues feel about it, but I think that would be appropriate.
See, the, the problem with the parking across the street with volunteers is that I don't know a volunteer from the general public, from an employee, when they pull into a spot.
A sticker.
A sticker for whom?
A green one, like we have in our windows, some kind of green, pink, yellow, I don't care what color it is. And our, our parking deck attendants maybe periodically, or a maintenance person can walk over there and make sure that the sticker's in the window.
Whenever the pleasure of the Board, Commissioner, we start handing out stickers to, to all these volunteers, they're just gonna fill up our parking lot, and we're not gonna be able to...
They're not all gonna be here at one time. I don't know, what, what do my colleagues want to do, what's the desire of the Board?
I thought Jim was just gonna research it more and see what the needs are.
Are you...
'Cause all I hear is you just, you got, you know, this has been going on for, what, 18 months, and you got, one lady came in and said she got a ticket, and now we're gonna...
What's going on? I've, I've helped more out that have had tickets.
I haven't had any.
I would say that we probably tow four or five cars a month.
Really?
Yes, sir. That may be high, but I'm trying to be, you know, honest about it. I do know that, that cars have been towed from the lot periodically. It's not a huge amount, but there are some.
No, you're looking for, it's one extra spot, it sounds like to me.
Oh, the, the, well, that spot's gonna be given back. Both Commissioner Basie and myself did not know that, that, that there's a spot for Voices for Children had been, uh...
Taken.
Taken, so that, that should be...
Can you check on the Voices for Children, and what's the other?
Victim witness.
They'll have one, they'll have one too.
Okay, so...
Okay, maybe you can work with them, because I asked Tim if he would give, as, when they go into training, when these people are being trained, give them a notice, a big sheet of paper with large print on it, that, parking over here, you know, if they park over here over two hours or four hours, whatever it is, that they're gonna get towed, and let them know exactly where they're supposed to park when they come in.
Okay, I just need...
And he said that he would do that, now maybe you can work with him to do something.
Okay, we'll, we'll, we'll come up with a, uh...
Just see what the issues are with the volunteers.
Let me know by next week, will you please?
Will do, Commissioner.
Thank you.
See what, if you can come up with a resolution, if not, you know, just let us know one way or the other.
Okay, Commissioner, thank you.
Public comment?
Is there anyone here that would like to address the Board, any questions, comments, concerns?
Good morning, Bob.
Good morning.
Good morning.
How beautiful day in the neighborhood. My name is Robert Kish, K-I-S-H.
Bob, what does your shirt say today?
Say again?
What is your shirt read?
Oh, Pearl Harbor.
Oh, okay.
It's out of date, 'cause it only has seven, so...
I was gonna say, there's only seven there, yeah, so...
I have to update it.
Okay, I just couldn't see it from the side.
Okay, well, the reason I'm wearing this shirt today, there were many thousands died on Pearl Harbor Day. The remains of some, I, I'm sorry, I goofed. Madam Chairman, Commissioners, Board Members, and members of the audience, there's 15, which is a good group. I know it's not December 7, but I also know thousands died at Pearl Harbor, and they can no longer vote. Thousands from World War II are dying, as we speak, each day. Hundreds have died in Iraq and will not vote this year. If you stand on the memorial of the sunken USS Arizona, oil still slowly seeps from the ship, its former lifeblood. And yet, even registered voters do not vote. We had 49% turnout, which means 25% of the voters that voted can swing an election, one out of four people. If every eligible person voted, there could not legally be votes more than those legally cast. Remember the Florida vote counts? These results were kept for a year. Remember the Columbia vote count? More votes were cast than there were registered voters, and the final results came in December. Those ballots were destroyed the next day, but the Florida votes were kept for a year. I have this information for the Election Board right down here. I spoke them right here in River City. If you do not vote, do not complain of the results. Therefore, I still have my necktie from last year. I don't care if it's from the red, white, blue, or green party. Vote. If there is nobody opposing you, if you run into a candidate that is unopposed, withhold your vote. Then we can see how many people vote for the individual, because if he gets one vote, he's in. If he doesn't vote for himself, you know he don't trust himself.
So you're telling us to vote or not to vote?
And then, you may have heard about this outfit a long time ago, remember? Do you, anybody remember USS Steel? It was a big plant when I was young, my father worked there. But we're getting away from the subject, we're talking about votes and money, and what I have here is something a little different today. I got some red tape. The red tape has existed ever since I basically tried to get my original tapes counted. So today, and I don't know if anybody's present here, I wish to award a golden candle to the Lorraine County Record Center. I have received six tapes in one week. We broke through the red tape. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Bob.
Check, make sure 18 and a half minutes weren't erased on one of those tickets.
Elizabeth Rummix, R-U-M-I-C-S, Oberlin, Ohio, I cannot resist following up on Bob's plea about voting by mentioning that in a discussion last evening, there had been a voter registration drive-in in Oberlin over the weekend, and someone mentioned that a number of the people said, "I don't vote," or "I don't think it's worth my while voting," or whatever. And as a person pointed out, the fact that you do not vote means that actually you are voting for the person who is being voted against, on or against. So it's very important for everybody to vote. The fact that you don't helps to dictate the result, which maybe you won't want.
Elizabeth, you mentioned that it was voter registration?
Yes, it was a form of voter registration.
Yes. You know, we often do this too, have voter registration, but the problem is, people will register and then not get out there to vote.
Yeah, right. But the statistics really are very depressing.
Thank you. Anyone else? I thank you very much.
John, ready?
John, are you ready?
Good morning, Commissioners, and thank you. My name is John Roca C., R-O-K-A-S-Y, I'm the Commissioner's Budget Director, and hopefully, everybody has Exhibit A and B before them. I'd like to talk briefly this morning about budgeting in two perspectives. First, I like to look at the Budget Department, how it's organized and what it does. And secondly, I'd like to discuss what I would simply call the human side of budgeting, if that's possible, and I think it is. I'm a low-tech guy, by the way, I still stick to flip charts. The organization is quite simple, the organization chart, we have our three Commissioners, the elected officials. We have the County Administrator, Jim Cordez, reporting to the three Commissioners. Jim's a lucky guy, by the way. We, we all have one boss, he's got three, and you can't beat that. I, I can't see we could beat that. I'm the department head here as the Budget Director, I have Shelley Moraro as the Assistant Budget Director, and I have two Budget Specialists, Dave O'Connor and Marla Janis, and they do a great job. I think your taxpayer dollars for their salaries are well worth it. I think the point of all this is that we are a small department, there's only four of us, but we cover a lot of territory.
I forgot to mention that we all have 280-some thousand bosses.
Yes, I think that's true, that's true, yeah, ultimately, that, I think that's true. I'm gonna be very brief here, this is still on Exhibit, thanks, Hal, Exhibit A. We have seven principal duties in the Budget Department, I've condensed this... We have seven principal duties in the Budget Department, I've condensed this into seven. First of all, the Budget Department serves as a fiscal advisor to Jim Cordez and the Board. The Budget Department does not legislate. That may seem obvious, I don't know, but it's important to note that the Commissioners make the decision by resolution to appropriate money, to move money, to spend money. It does not come from appointed people like myself or other appointed people. Another function we have is to construct a general fund, which this year, our general fund is about $70 million. And the way that works is that my department and I about this time of the year construct the first pass, as we call it, of the general fund, and we put it together, and then I sit with Jim Cordez, we have working lunches together, we work after work, and we put our thoughts together, and then ultimately, we visit the Commissioners and give them what we feel is adequate, a plan for adequate funding for the new year, in this case, 2004. The Commissioners will accept some of the things we give them, they'll reject some of the things. We compromise, I guess is the best way to say, on certain other numbers, and that's the way the process should go, it's a give-and-take process, but again, ultimately, the Commissioners will make the decision based on their objectives. We implement the budget, what that simply means is, once the Commissioners approve the budget, particularly the general fund budget, there's 33 departments, by the way, in the general fund, then somebody has to take this massive amount of data, communicate it from the Board of Commissioners and Jim, over to the 33 departments. It's a big communication job, and that's a responsibility of the Budget Department. We perform control functions, what does that mean? It means that once the budgets are distributed in early January, the department heads have to watch the money, the spending, but we in the Budget Department, the four of us, also watch spending very closely. So if there's a problem in trends in spending, we report that to Jim Cordez and the Board to alert them that there is a potential problem. We review and test special revenue funds, which this year, the appropriation for all our special revenue funds is about $203 million. That's a lot of money. So you can see the Board of Commissioners has a great deal of responsibility in approving appropriations yearly, 203 million, and 70 million is well over a quarter of a billion dollars that this Board has to review and approve to operate the departments. Special revenue organizations, special revenue funds are typically MRDD, Children's Services, those type of organizations. We prepare a tax budget every year, that exercise is a big one, it usually happens among the four of us in the department in the April and May period. Once this tax budget is put together, it's passed on to Mr. Stewart, our County Auditor, and it also goes to the State Tax Commission in Columbus, Ohio. We secure borrowings for the county on behalf of the County Commissioners, bonds and notes. The Board will approve borrowings, but the Budget Department sets all the actions, or sets out the actions, to accomplish that by contacting the brokerage firms, the attorneys, that type of thing. Our latest issue, by the way, was the $25 million Justice Center issue, which happened Now, what I'd like to do very briefly is look at what I call the human side of budgeting. I have one more flip chart, this is it. Ladies and gentlemen, this chart represents what really makes a budget work. I really can't overemphasize what's represented on this chart. It's a fabric, a series of relationships that must work and must be nurtured daily, weekly, monthly, and even on a yearly basis. I think it's best summarized at the bottom of this chart. Budgeting is much more than just numbers, it's about communication and relationships. And here's what I think is at the heart of it, the quality of the budget can be no better than the quality of communication and relationships that support it, and the underlying credibility and trust that must be earned each day by the Budget Department. Here we are in the Budget Department, the four of us, we have communication and we establish relationships every day, as I said, weekly, monthly, with 13 different entities in this county, and I think there's probably more that I didn't think of. In fact, there's one, the Treasurers Department, I should have put on here, it just escaped me. But we do have communication with the Commissioners and the County Administrator, obviously, that's the number-one priority, to be alert and to work with our bosses daily. We work with Moody's and Fitch's Rating Agencies, they read our bonds and notes nationally. One thing that's real, real important is, my staff and I have grounded ourselves in the local business community, we got to know the bankers, the brokerage houses, we also deal with bankers and brokers in Chicago, New York City, Cincinnati, so we're in with the business community, that's very important. We work with county officials daily, we work with the County Prosecutor on his budget, County Auditor, County Treasurer, EMA, 911, and actually up to 33 department heads. We work with the Budget Commission, that's made up of Mr. Manning, the Prosecutor, Mr. Teller, the Treasurer, and Mr. Stewart, the Auditor, and that group of people meets once a month, and yearly, they determine the total amount of money that the Commissioners can distribute to the general fund departments. It's a very important group of people. We work daily with the County Auditors on the second floor, Mr. Stewart's group, we work yearly with the State Auditors, that's a very important group to keep on the right side of, work with. We also work with the media, I know I speak to reps from the Chronicle, the Journal, and the Plain Dealer, so when they need information, my staff or myself will provide that information to them, and they've been good to us on that. Grantee organizations, these are typically criminal justice-type programs, juvenile programs, that are funded for two or three, four years from the state of Ohio, and we work with the people that administer that program here at the county level. We also work with city officials. I work with Mr. Mantini, who's the City Auditor of Lorraine, in fact, I'm working on a couple issues with him as we speak. I also work with Mr. Polesky, who's the Aleria City Auditor, infrequently, but I do work with him on several issues. We work with schools and social organizations, I get calls from the public, I don't want to say frequently, but I do occasionally, and many times they're from college students, and they want information about government, how it works, they want to know what our budget looks like, historically, trends, that type of thing, so I explain that type of thing to them. I also work heavily with Yvonne and her group. Yvonne spends millions of dollars of money, right, Yvonne? Through the Board of Commissioners, of course. So our staff works daily, I would say, with Yvonne's group. We work with legal counsel, accounting in county government is grounded in the legal system. There are certain things that you cannot do in accounting without legal approval, I work with Jerry Innis quite a bit, so unless he gives me a go-ahead on certain matters, I won't do it. I also work with bond counsel, our lawyers in Cleveland, whenever there is a large note or bond issue, in fact, any issue has to go for approval, and the legal groundwork has to be set through our bond counsel in Cleveland. Finally, let me tell you a brief story, I think it's very interesting. One November morning in 2001, while Jim Cordez and I were working together, my phone rang, this was in my office. I was expecting a call at any time for Moody's Investor Service in New York City. Moody's may be described as the premier national rating agency that evaluates and rates the financial strength and operational qualities of counties, cities, states, and businesses throughout the United States. Here in the county, we were anxious to have Moody's rate our upcoming $25 million Justice Center bond issue. Simple proposition, if Moody's rates Lorraine County high, typically in the A category, for this issue, our bonds will be more prized in the U.S. financial marketplace, the bonds will be more saleable, and ultimately, we as a county will pay less interest expense on the bonds. That savings for the county, and that's savings for all of us as taxpayers. And it was Moody's from New York City that did call us back at 10:00 a.m. in the morning on November, I believe it was November 21st. The point I'm getting to here is that financial and budgetary data had been before them as they began a two-hour teleconference intensive call with Jim Cordez and me. They grilled us nonstop for two hours, for two hours from 10:00 a.m. till noon with question after question. They were polite, but business, all business. Jim, Commissioner Moore, and I also visited New York City the following April, that's 2002, and met face-to-face with the Moody's people and also Fitch's Rating Agency, again, to be quizzed about the county's numbers, the budgets, and other county issues. What's my point? Moody's and Fitch's were certainly versed in our financial and budgetary condition prior to us meeting them. They knew our numbers, but what they wanted was communication, and equally important, they wanted to and did establish a relationship with Lorraine County that went well beyond the numbers, and it proved to be successful. That leads me to my final point today. As one lady had asked one of our directors a few weeks ago in this audience, "How is your department's performance measured?" And that's a good question. In the county financial world, two good measuring sticks come to mind. First, the Moody's and Fitch's rating, A1 by Moody's and AA by Fitch's were the results for Lorraine County. I don't know if this is going to pick up on the camera. There's also a picture of this behind Commissioner Vacy, and what this really says is, by way of picture, that Fitch rates Lorraine County AA under $25 million bond issue, and this appeared on Broadway, ladies and gentlemen, this is probably one of our finest hours, it appeared on a marquee at 46th and Broadway, New York City, so it's something I think we're going to treasure for a long time. A second measuring stick is the results of the annual audit for the county. Lorraine County has obviously performed well year after year, clean audits and excellent financial results. In this regard, and although budgetary is a major component, credit belongs to Mr. Mark Stewart, County Auditor, and his very capable staff, and Mr. Dan Teller, County Treasurer, and his very professional group of people. I thank you very much.
Thank you, John. Is there anyone that has any questions for John?
You say our rating is AA or A1, could you give us some notion of the total scale, how high, how many As could we go up, and how many, how far could we go down?
That's a good question, Doug. There's A, B, and C. That's it, it's that simple. There's different categories within A, we receive at the higher scale of the A category, so we're probably in the upper sixth, seventh of the total rating system, which to me is excellent. It's a good question.
I'd like to piggyback on that from, AA is better than single A, and AAA is better than AA, right?
All As are good, Commissioner, Fitch rates by a different scale, but still uses their As as the top...
It's a matter of how much you're going to pay in interest, depending on what A you have.
But it's not simply A, B, or C. The As have more than just one.
Yes, that's, exactly, there's different categories within As, different within Bs...
And three As is better than two, and two As is better than one.
Correct, that's right, Commissioner.
I just wanted to clarify.
And then there's A1, A2, A3.
In addition.
That's right. But A, A rating is an excellent rating, in any category of A.
Yeah, one question, can a Lorraine County resident in the future, or possibly, we're coming up with a horse, if a Lorraine County resident, if they go to one of these outfits, so to speak, purchase these bonds and get better than 1.5 or 1% interest on the bank?
Well, the issue's been sold, of course, on the Lorraine County Justice...
Yes, they can.
You have to go through...
But it's distributed through a markets, marketing system.
There are residents, there are residents that purchase the bonds, and even the hospital bonds that the county backs.
Because I was unable to when I tried.
Well, no, you can't call direct to Wall Street and purchase that stuff, you gotta go talk to one of the local investment guys, tell them what you want, and they'll tell you whether or not they can get it.
Through a brokerage house, that's right. And the interest we're paying on that $25 million for the audience's sake is 4.89% interest expense, and that is incredibly low, so there is a lot of taxpayer savings with us in our A rating. That led to a tremendous sale at a 4.89 annual rate of interest for us to pay.
Hospitals depend on that also.
I mean, exactly.
Hospitals come to us and...
You can credit the Board with that, I mean, there was...
That's why we got that lovely $25,000 check, because of the good bond rating that was available through our company.
That's a good point, Commissioner, that helped us on that issue also.
Are there any other questions, Elizabeth?
Could you explain just very briefly, what is the tax budget, as contrasted with the...
Okay, it's a good question. The tax budget is a compilation, Elizabeth, of, it used to be called, I hate to use that term, the wish list of all the departments, I know we've heard that over, it's a compilation of what departments send us at the beginning of the year, asking just what they want. We know those numbers are going to be a little bit high, it's simply an estimate of what the final budget will look like, because in budgeting, everything is based on revenue, you have to have the revenue to support the appropriations. When the tax budgets are submitted, they might come in for, say, $80 million, but we have $70 million worth of interest, or revenue, I should say. So we cut that tax budget down, that in a sense is a starting point of our budgeting too, the tax budget, but it's an estimate, it's not the so-called annual appropriation which is passed in December. So that tax budget is taken as a starting point, it's also passed on to Mr. Stewart, and also to the Tax Commission in Ohio, to be used for their purposes. It's not the final budget, but it is a budget estimate, I guess is the best way to put it.
Well, I guess I'm just curious why it's called a tax budget, does it determine what tax rates we may, as citizens, be paying?
I hate to venture on that ground, only because Mr. Stewart is the expert on that, but it has something to do with taking those numbers of estimated expenditures and looking at levy proceeds and levy rates. I don't want to comment behind it, only because I'm certainly not an expert in that area. You're welcome.
Okay, thank you, John, good job.
You're welcome.
Yvonne?
Yvonne Newton.
Yvonne is the director for, a purchasing director, and she's going to inform the public and update the Board.
Okay, my name is Yvonne Newton, I'm the purchasing director for the County Commissioners. I'm going to give you a little history and my background, because I've been with the county almost 24 years. I started in October 29th, 1979, I started with the SITA program and the ETA program, got laid off December 13th, 1983, and then I started working in the Commissioners office, assisting with purchasing, became county, I mean, Administrative Secretary to George Corey in 1986, and Purchasing Specialist in 1989, and became Coordinator in 1994, and finally Director of Purchasing in 1997. So I've been with the county quite a few years. I'm a member of the Secretary Treasurer of the County Commissioners Association of Purchasing. That gives us the opportunity to bid out on state purchasing, where you, the state has already bid at those items out, and we can use them without bidding them out. The majority of... The majority of the state purchasing that we've used is basically with the vehicles, and we've purchased a number of vehicles for the Sheriff Department, Prosecutor's Office, and the Commissioners, with our fleet. We average on requisitions, weekly, about 50 to 60 requisitions, and those are the items that the Commissioners approve. Like today, on item number six, there are requisitions that my department has prepared during the week, and we submit them to the Commissioners for their approval, and then they're turned into purchase orders. At the end of the year, like around November or so, they increase a little bit more, they go from 80 to about 100 requisitions a week. And we process requisitions for about 35 departments. So we have three different purchase orders. We have standard purchase orders, which are basically purchases that, just one item purchased, maybe services, contracts, and so forth. Then we have what we call our blanket purchase orders, which are for three months, not take see $5,000, and therefore supplies only. And then we have our stupid purchase orders, and that's anything over $5,000. And they're basically for most of our contracts, the daycare providers, just larger contracts. We also a member of BitNet. What BitNet allows us to do is if a department calls me up and they want to know about some specs, we can go online, pick those specs up, and custom make them to what we want them to be. So those specs that are just hard to find, or you don't know what to put in them, they usually call us, and we usually go ahead and put them in a bid specs for them. At the present time, the estimated value, our bid value is $25,000. Now, that is the current formal bid threshold right now. And what we do with our bids is that we advertise them two consecutive weeks in a Chronicle order journal. We also are able to process those in the BitNet section in Construction Bulletin, they let us advertise free in those two things. So that's what we do with our bids. Our quotes, we do quotes for various departments, because sometimes they don't get three quotes, we'll pull those requisitions that have come to our, for the Commissioners and say, "Look, we need, I know we can get better pricing on whatever you're doing." And there's another department that's trying to get, say, like computers. And what we'll do is go out and get three quotes, sometimes five, just depending on who, what department it is, and how big the quotes are. And we require those three quotes, and then we'll give them back to the departments, and basically they'll put in as to who they want to do business with. We also do requests for proposal, and they're basically like service contracts that we deal with each and every day. And then another item that we do are whitebacks, and they're vouchers that the Commissioners have approved, like on an annual resolution for $750, that a department can go out and shop, and they can go ahead and put the voucher in for payment, and that's called a whiteback. And they're on the Commissioners' bid, when they approve, they're on the bids, like bills like this. So these are all the bills, that's underneath 750, and our utilities, because we keep track of our utilities also. And then we have centralized a couple of things that people, certain departments give us, and those are, we centralize our calendar orders, which is a good thing that we've done, our toilet tissue, paper, trash liners, and some of our custodial supplies. They have all been centralized at the present time. And then in 19, I mean, sorry, 2001, in February, the Commissioners passed a resolution for local preference, which was a good thing for us. That gives our local vendors a 3% edge on outside vendors, so we can recycle our money back into the county to do business with our local vendors there. And we have our online auction that we're doing right now, and if anybody interested in that, you can go to www.govdeals.com. And at the present time, we're working on our website with Ernie Smith, but he has been taken away for some other duties, so it's kind of like putting him on a waysite right now. But if you would like to see what we have right now on there, there are some vehicles on there for the Sheriff Department. And then also, we have an employee discount program, which is a really good program. That was turned over to us in 2000, and it has really, we have people calling us to say we can offer employees different discounts. Like we have our theme parks every summer, Cedar Point, and I always call it, you know, Jog Lake, but it's Six Flags. And so we've had, we have that every summer. We have the Gund Arena, we have baseball games, basketball games, Disney ice, and at the present time, we have the Ringling Brothers. And what they've done this year is given us passes, like credit card passes for two years, so they want to expire, and we're very limited. So, and that's for employees and family members to go at a discount price. Also, with the customer service, so if we get an invoice in, excuse me, that no one knows where it goes, it's usually coming to the purchasing department. So we're spending probably about 50% on the phone with a vendor that has no name on the invoice, no department number, and we have to look it up and see what it is. And sometimes it takes a couple days to do that. We also, I lost my train of thought. We also go through the, at the present time, we're going through the Oracle program, where we're trying to update that. So we can do a little bit more things. We can put our bids online once we get the upgrade on that, because then we can always advertise right out, like we do some of our quotes right now, just basically go through the email and advertise those out for our quotes and so forth. I believe that's basically wraps up the purchasing department. I think I just talked...
Thank you, Yvonne. Does anyone have any questions for Yvonne? Okay, thank you. Do you want to go into executive session now?
Yeah, we have a public hearing at 11, so we may as well. I'll make motion on exec.
Second, Mr. Moore.
Hi.
Ms. Blair.
Hi.
Ms. Basie.
Hi.
Commissioners have reconvened from the executive session. Want to go back to personnel?
Yes, please.
Authorize various personnel actions as indicated on the summary for employees within jurisdiction of Lorraine County Board of Commissioners.
I'll sum it up.
Second. Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Basie?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Hi.
Do we have a hearing?
Yes, we have, at 11 o'clock, it is 11:18 right now.
Do you have to journalize, or do anything like that, or?
Probably not. I don't think so. I think it's just right there. Jerry? We can just continue, right? Do we have to?
Yeah.
All right, we have, what, 11 o'clock?
Yes.
Which we're about 15, 20 minutes late. And the purpose of the hearing is to maintain the operation of the jail. And is there anyone here that would like to comment, oppose, or approve?
Is there anybody here to oppose?
There's nothing here.
No.
I know. No, no, to discuss the...
The purpose is to maintain the operation of the jail, the levy.
Is this a resolution that was prepared for us to amend? Is this the, I found this in Board Business?
For the jail.
Well, but this is the old one, I guess, Jerry. This is...
Do you have a copy of the new one?
No, what I had was in Board Business.
You'll find the envelope there.
Okay, thanks, John.
I have a...
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Where is mine?
No, this is one, this is, says that it's effective July 1st, 2001 through June 30th, 2003.
That's the old one.
This is an old one.
That's exactly what I have.
So what do you want to do?
That's what I took out of Board Business. I wanted to know if we had one prepared that we could read, so the public would understand what we're talking about, as well as the Commissioners.
Okay, this is regards to the percentage of how we can allocate the funds. I mean, is there a recommendation from the Sheriff's Department? Do you know?
Down here, I'm sorry. Excuse me.
I'm sorry, I know you didn't want to speak, but...
I'm incorrect, I apologize. Thank you, Jerry.
Okay.
Captain Jim Druzdowski from the Sheriff's Office. Speaking with the sheriff this morning, unfortunately couldn't be here, we had several meetings planned for today, and unfortunately, we're all moving all over the place. With regards to the jail allocation, obviously, we'd like to see like a 90% versus 10%, 10 going to renovation funds, but we also understand that with the economy and everything else, that things have to be moved around, percentages be moved around. We just want to make sure that we do have some money in a renovation account, as things come up, we can do it. But we will defer to the Commissioners.
Well, no, I'm asking what's the recommendation from the Sheriff's Department? What would you ask? You guys want a 90-10?
That was what the sheriff would like to be considered. However, if...
That's what's on here right now, is what we have, right, a 90-10?
90-10. So that's satisfactory?
No, this is 100, this is to distribute 100%.
The resolution...
Ma'am Chair, may I?
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, I confused you earlier. Jerry did prepare this resolution, I highlighted the one, two, the third where as, but the fourth is the resolution, and it says, "Therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Lorraine County after conducting public hearing, that the aforesaid amended resolution number 95-105, distributing 100% of the 1/4% sales and use tax for Division A7 for operations and maintenance, and 0% for Division A5 for construction, equipping, and repair of the Lorraine County jail facility, is hereby extended to continue from July 1st, 2003, and we are to insert either a date certain or hereafter until further resolution of this board."
If I might, kind of for background purpose, when we originally passed the resolution, it had percentages divvied out for years, and what it had for after the sixth year of collection, it had for a 90-10 split, 90 for operational, 10 for construction, and so forth. What we did two years ago is we modified that resolution to make it 100 for operations and nothing for construction. We did that for a two-year duration. That expired as of June 30th. So now the question is, what do you want to do here on out? If you do nothing, it goes back to 90-10. You could make it 100-0, you, you know, 90-10 isn't a magical figure either, you could do 95-85, you could do 98-2, you could do any number that you want to do. So the point is, is if you don't do anything now, it goes back to 92, goes back to 90-10 split, and you need to make a decision as to what split you want to make from this point on.
Yeah, we're going to have to do something, because the General Fund subsidized 1.1 million last year, and this year, it'll probably amount to about 3 million subsidized from the General Fund. And then next year will probably be more, so that we definitely have to do something. And the funding is there, it's available, and it's a decision we have to make in regards to the amount. John, do you know what the total is, so that we can, I mean, I don't know if I should go 95 or 90, because I don't know what the total is. I would like to keep some in reserve for construction and repairs.
Isn't it $6 million?
Is that the full six?
The tax rate is $6 million.
So you're talking 10%, $600,000 for, you know, that's what you're talking about.
It would be about $600,000, that's exactly right, if that decision is made, $600,000 for constru-